All right.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're right. All order. Roll call.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbret.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Present.
Jenny David. Here.
Right, so everybody okay with the agenda, the way it looks?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So we'll have a public comment, and this will be for what is on the agenda. Do we have public comment in the room? We have public comment on Zoom. Okay. Our first appointment is Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine. Are you on?
Good evening, yes, we're here. This is Brian Hart, CEO of MIFSM. This is Randy Fow, COO of MIFSM.
Good evening, board members.
All right. So. What are we looking at here, Tim?
You've got some materials, including the contract with the institute that the county has signed on to for medical examiner services that goes through March thirty first of two thousand and twenty three. There, as you are aware, commissioners, there was a notice that came recently considering a change of personnel at the institute, and there's been some discussion in Saginaw County in particular about the transaction that went down. And the concern, and you see the letter from Saginaw County in the packet here tonight, a concern about how that process was undertaken. Saginaw County quotes a section from their contract that is very similar to our contract. It talks about key personnel and key personnel only being removed or replaced with the express written consent of the county. And this is where Saginaw County was hung up. When Dr. Bush left the organization, they felt that was one of the key personnel. They considered that a breach of their contract, et cetera, and have taken actions based on that. Now, the CEO from the institute, Mr. Hart, who's on the line tonight, was gracious enough to attend this meeting to answer any questions that you might have concerning this. There were concerns expressed out of the prosecuting attorney's office in Saginaw County about the qualifications of personnel and then the medical exams that go on, the word escapes me, the autopsies that happened to make sure that there are qualified personnel doing that. I don't know enough about the field to know the difference between a forensic pathologist and a medical examiner. So I'm hoping that the personnel here on the phone can help explain that to us and to reassure that the contract is being followed. And I'll just turn that over now if it's okay with the board to Mr. Hart to talk about that, and then feel free then to ask any questions that you have.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. Again, my name is Brian Hart, and I am CEO of Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine. I've been in this position for almost seven months. We did have a changeover in personnel. Dr. Russell Bush was dismissed for cause, and we brought on our deputy medical examiner, who already has been voted on by Ogoma County and several of our other counties. We maintain six counties in mid-Michigan area for our services. We promoted our forensic pathologist, Dr. Mahabir, to chief medical examiner. And Dr. Mahabir is qualified. He is a forensic pathologist in three levels. He's triple board certified. He's also one of only three pediatric pathology, board certified pathologists in the state of Michigan. He's eminently qualified to continue this role. Our entire staff has maintained our service levels throughout this transition. Response times remain to be very, very competitive, the best in the area. And we are currently bringing on new staff members, medical examiner investigators in Ogoma County to be able to respond to those incidences as quickly as possible. We're very excited about our future and our path forward, and we feel that we are the best forensics team in the state of Michigan, but certainly in the area. And I'd be very happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Well, I guess my first, oh, go ahead, Jenny.
No, I'm sorry. Tim, I thought Ladonna was going to be involved in on this phone call as well.
She's not here, I can say that.
Because didn't she have some concerns as well she wanted to voice?
She did, and I am not educated enough to articulate those concerns. But I do know she had conversation with her colleagues in Saginaw County, so whatever those concerns were, she was echoing those concerns. I don't want to necessarily call him out, but the sheriff is here tonight too, and I talked with the sheriff and not to put words in your mouth, but you're indicating to me was you were satisfied with the services that you received of late, and so you had no, from your perspective, no concern.
No.
So, and I'm sorry Ladonna's not here because I would like to hear, you know, at least be able to introduce what those concerns might be.
Like, I guess my, my question to them would be, do you have reason or knowledge of what Saginaw County took exception to? With the latest action?
Saginaw County, I believe, had a long-term relationship with Dr. Bush. Dr. Bush worked for the county for several years before MIFSM took over the contract for Saginaw County in two thousand and nineteen. And in that time, we've saved Saginaw County almost a million dollars and cut response times in half. And I believe it's that friendship, you know, relationship that was longstanding. And again, no, no, there's no ill will with Dr. Bush. Dr. Bush is a good man, and it was just time for a transition. But I believe that's more or less the situation with Saginaw County in particular. The other counties that we do serve, we've heard back from all of them, except for one, they've all approved this measure. And, you know, it's just, it's just moving our forensic pathologist, which Dr. Mahabir is, from a deputy to the chief forensic pathologist.
All right.
Didn't, didn't Saginaw County opt out? Did they opt out of the contract?
They've taken the initial steps to opt out. There's a six-month window there where we will still maintain services for Saginaw County. So we're still working with Saginaw County. You know, six months is a long way away. We hope to be able to smooth over any rough patches from this, you know, this, our latest
Transition.
Transition. And so, you know, but that's, they have taken the initial steps on that, correct? You are right.
Any other questions, Jenny?
I mean, I guess they just got to understand our hesitancy here. You know, Dr. Bush was just sitting in front of us here not very long ago. And from what, what I've heard is this separation was definitely non voluntary. I guess we definitely need to see what Ladonna has to say because I think she's been in contact with Saginaw County. So I think, I think we need, we need contact with her before going forward.
Okay.
Correcting that. We were under the impression that that was going to be available to us this evening. And I mentioned to Commissioner when I spoke with him a couple nights ago that she is, we're more than available whenever she needs to reach out, and we've had discussions with prosecuting attorneys from each of our counties to address any concerns. Again, nothing has changed from our end, absolutely nothing. And so service times, my Dr. Mahabir was, was the man performing autopsies. He is still the person, the doctor, the physician, the forensic pathologist that is currently performing autopsies. He's just also the medical examiner as well. Which most medical or most private entities are lucky to have a forensic pathologist who's also their medical examiner.
Craig, Mark, Ron?
I'm just reading the boat. They go on. Yeah, and I mean, the reason we went with these guys because Bush was involved with them. But, you know, I mean, I, I'm not going to get into their business how why they separated, but.
Turnover happens. All right, let's Ladonna comes forward and lets us know of any concerns she has, and then we can obviously communicate that back to you guys. Ronnie.
When you've got six counties involved and one's dissatisfied, you've still got five satisfied. That speaks a lot, so.
I spoke to Ladonna briefly this afternoon, and she told me that she had some concerns but didn't give me any specifics. I thought that she was going to be here. I didn't specifically ask her if she was going to be here tonight. So I can't elaborate on anything of what her specific concerns may have been.
Isn't, is Saginaw County the largest county that served?
Correct, and that is, yes, absolutely correct.
Brett, didn't you have something?
Yeah, so is Mahabir, he's not the deputy anymore? Or he is still?
He's, he's the chief, he's our chief medical examiner. In the other counties, he was voted as that, this is more of a formality, just voting and signing off on him as from a deputy to the chief medical examiner. And they've done so in their board meetings. I believe in one of our counties, the commissioner just made the decision and appointed him as the chief. So again, his role as far as the duties of
Talked to Diana.
The autopsy suite will not change whatsoever. He's the one performing the autopsies. He's fully qualified to do that as well.
See, fully qualified, is that a state designation or is it a certification? What exactly is that?
Yes, sir. It's a board certification, and instead of one, one board certification, he has three. And again, one of only three doctors in the entire state of Michigan that has a pediatric board certification as well for, for, of course, deaths to those under the age, under the age of eighteen.
And just another, this is a technical question, and I might need to dive into the statute to get the answer, but you might know. With this change in personnel, I don't know if Dr. Bush was specifically named as a medical examiner for the county or if it was your institute, but my question is, if it were Dr. Bush, do we not have to pass a resolution to name somebody else?
Right, and that's what we're requesting tonight.
Yeah, that is our request is, is that Ogoma County, Ogoma County recognizes Dr. Mahabir as the chief medical examiner going forward. And the board has recognized Dr. Mahabir as the deputy, and we would just like to make that transition from deputy to chief. Formalized.
And do we need to then also name somebody else as deputy medical examiner?
Not at this time, sir.
Didn't we name the two, if I'm not mistaken?
That's what I thought. I'll have to go back and look.
I think there were two that we did when Dr. Bush was here. The one you're discussing, and there was another gentleman, I believe it was board certified.
There was, yes, sir.
Is that person still with your firm?
That person is currently, but that person is also transferring out on their own accord.
Okay.
Due to another job opportunity.
Understood.
So it's acceptable for Mahabir to be on our death certificates prior to this resolution?
Absolutely.
Okay.
He has access through MDI log, EDRS, which are system, medical systems that, not to get into the weeds, but he has, he has full access to all medical.
Right, and I spoke to EDRS today. There is a question about being the deputy or not, so that's why I asked that.
Again, it's the designation. I'm sorry, go right ahead.
What time are you, are you looking for this?
Um, as I say,
What timeframe?
Have it. As I stated, we have it with our other counties. We would like this as soon as possible. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but, and I very well could be, but I believe when I spoke with the gentleman, the administrator the other evening, I believe there was going to be a vote tonight, or possibly you have a meeting next week for a vote. I couldn't remember, and I apologize, but we would like it done before the holidays if at all possible, just the vote itself. Just the formality.
So we want to put this on for next thing? Any more questions, Jenny?
I think in the meantime, or have Ladonna present before this vote is taken next week, we definitely need to hear what she says before we go forward with this.
I agree.
All right. Oh, maybe we'll see if Ladonna can get in contact with Tim and we can figure out what's going on here before our next meeting.
Again, I couldn't be more genuine. Whenever Ladonna reaches out, I can leave my phone number with you, my cell phone number via email after the meeting, and she's more than welcome to reach out to me at any time before next week's meeting.
All right, thanks, Brian.
You're very welcome. Thank you very much for having us.
Meeting's on Tuesday next week.
Okay, we'll put that on our calendar, and I'll be expecting a call if, what time, sir?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Five thirty. And then again, not only your prosecuting attorney, but anyone else that would have a follow-up question, please feel free to reach out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, appointment three B, TMD Correctional Services Payment Discussion. Are they on or?
Quick review of what this is about. We received, as you've got in the materials, what is titled as a Notice of Default. I want to reassure the board, the county is not in default. Their bills are paid. But this is coming down to a question of the requirement the county has that we receive an invoice for every expense that we have. So a check when it leaves here has to be tied to an invoice. I do know the invoice that was most recently submitted was submitted after the close date for a board meeting, and so our vendor had to wait another two weeks before that check was written. He did ask in his letter to be able to have the conversation either with a committee or with the board. So this is what we've set up for tonight. I later have understood, despite having sent the reply that they are out of state right now. So any conversation, well, you know, couldn't wait until the next coming, the whole meeting. But assured, our bills are being paid so that when we do get the invoices, which we have been getting, they are processed just like every other invoice that we receive.
Okay. All right, next is appointment three C, Brian Osher, Corrections Lieutenant, Description for the Cook.
Evening. It's keeping me up past my bedtime now. If you have a copy of the last time you were here, you requested a job description for the jail cook, the civilian position.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get to it.
I don't see it.
Okay.
There it is.
I'm looking at it. So as we're writing up this job description, is there anything that you guys wanted to change or update, or is this basically what they're doing right now?
This is basically what they're doing right now, with the exception of the civilian cook that holds this position now does not have the serve safe requirement, because when she was hired years ago, it was not a requirement when she was hired. So she's kind of grandfathered in. She hasn't, whether she's going to be willing to take it when she comes back or not, I don't know. I don't see why she wouldn't. But that's the only difference, is she doesn't have that requirement right now. And in the job description, they have to have within six months of being hired. Obviously, she's been with us for, I think, fourteen years. So she does not have that, that requirement. The rest of the stuff she does.
Okay.
I, I'm sorry, I think I missed something. Is she going to have to get that requirement, obtain that requirement?
Well, when she was hired, it wasn't a requirement, so I would ask her to do it. I don't know why she wouldn't be willing to do it, but I don't know if I should be able to force her to do it. It's training, so I don't think there'll be an issue with it, but I haven't discussed it with her.
So I guess I missed that. So is this going to be a training or just a test?
Well, it'll be a test, but there's training you have to do. They're studying that. There's a lot of different factors with it. She's, she's not going to be able to just go in and pass that. There's, there's a lot of. I've done it before.
I have too.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
My food safety certification was not easy.
Yeah, there's a lot of requirements with it. I mean, I've looked at it, it scared me, so.
Well, when you work in the field, it's definitely a lot easier, but if you're not, if you're new to it, it's definitely hard.
Absolutely.
Anybody else have any questions regarding this?
No, I didn't have it.
Jenny, any more questions?
Well, I guess, yeah, I mean, I hate to put a stipulation on this, so wonder if she chooses to come back and doesn't pass a test or is not able to take the test or get this certification that you're discussing, and then what?
Well, Brian, Brian already stated that she's grandfathered in, so she doesn't necessarily have to take it.
Kind of like the corrections certification. People before May, I think it was May of two thousand and thirteen, that working corrections didn't have to have corrections, county corrections academies. After that date, I think it was May two thousand and thirteen, they had to attend a hundred and sixty hour correctional academy. I would consider it the same thing. She was hired way before this was a requirement for, from us. So I wouldn't feel right forcing her to take it if she didn't want to do it.
Could we add that in here just to document it that, that's, that's what it is, that she's grandfathered in, she doesn't have to?
We can put the verbiage in it. This has a, you know, grandfather clause, if you will, just to have that protection, but I.
I'd suggest that you just write a memo to your personnel file and put it in there.
Yeah.
This definitely will not preclude her from coming back to work at all, and we, with the union contract being what it is, and she being here for fourteen years, there'd be no way to enforce that, you know, the measure we're doing for now. However, you can ask her to take the test again, and so, you know, whatever you want to do, I certainly would encourage at least going through the training, because that's good. But as far as that being a requirement to come back to work, it's not.
Right, I don't foresee a reason she wouldn't study and attempt to get this. I just hate to make a requirement, but she doesn't. You know, I would, I would assume she would do it, make every effort to get it and pass it.
Probably won't even be a problem for her, but.
Probably not.
All right, any more questions?
No, I just want that in writing somewhere, whether it's a memo or whatever.
Okay. All right, thanks, guys. All right, three B, don't go anywhere.
Okay, I'll stay here.
Go anywhere, yeah.
I'll stay in the Aussie.
All right, so under Sheriff, we're going to talk about the Michigan Works Training Opportunity for the part-time employee and some grant applications.
Yep, so you should have received a couple of memos along with hopefully at least enough of the grant information as far as what we're dealing with. The first is the Michigan Works Training Opportunity. Deputy veteran is here this evening. Through the memo, you see he's been employed with us here this past year for seasonal employment, worked real well for the Marine Patrol. So through his research and contact with Michigan Works, he's determined that he's qualified for this program through Michigan Works that will pay for his entire training through a certified police academy. So in this particular case, it would be Kirtland. A requirement of the, the training program, if you will, is he has to be sponsored for workers' comp in that type of situation. So this scenario, the way that it sets up, he qualifies for all the training to be paid for through Michigan Works, and the county would just have to pay his wages. In this particular case, his part-time wage was fifteen dollars an hour during the seasonal. We put together the forty-hour weeks for seventeen weeks. It would be roughly ten thousand, two hundred dollars in wages plus fringes and workers' comp. So roughly another fifteen hundred, two thousand, Tim, somewhere. Roughly, I think, we'd have to look at the seven point two five for the comp number onto that, but it would be just that additional money there. So there'd be no overtime, travel to and from, we could accomplish with the empower. That's still a part of the fleet. He also had agreed that he would take his personal vehicle as needed, if needed, type of thing, also to accomplish the training. Kind of the reasoning for where we could benefit from this situation, other than a certified MCO as part-time employee, first and foremost is the ORV grant. You'll recognize in the memo that last season, our ORV grant didn't get utilized to its full potential. We only spent a couple thousand dollars, and the biggest reason for that is it requires an MCO certified officer for enforcement purposes on the ORV. And a lot of the ones that we have on our roster are also employed with consumers, tree cutting business, other places of employment, and could not give us the hours that were needed to do this. With the ORV ordinance being discussed on a regular basis, next summer could be an active season. This would really give us an opportunity to put somebody dedicated to use the ORV grant next season as a part-time employee. We'd be able to fill him in also too for shift fill, but we'd have to do that in compliance with contracts, union contracts for requirements and overtime, staffing levels and that type of thing. But we would be able to also utilize him in that capacity to fill in some shifts as long as we do it in compliance with the, the contract, so. Those are basically all the numbers. I didn't get any questions to try to expand on the numbers. Basically, it would just be his salary. Would be the cost to the county for the sponsorship to attend the county. Michigan Works would, would pay for the rest of it. And then we would have a part-time MCO certified officer for ORV. And some shift fill.
Is, is Kirtland required by Michigan Works?
Not Kirtland was just the school that fit this grant, if you will, or this Michigan Works opportunity. The school starts January seventeenth, eighteenth, tenth, seven days off. So he would, he would be able to start soon in January, and he would be up and running by the time we get into spring, summer, when ORVs get ready to kick out.
So as of right now, Deputy Better, he's doing security as well, right?
He also does work as a bailiff, and he also does some part-time transport corrections.
So what's his average hourly wage and how many hours does he work a week?
As the bails, I mean, we'd have to ask him that. You know, he worked primarily for us during the summers, a Marine Patrol officer, so that was at the fifteen dollar. So his hours through the bailiff comes through the court system. Anytime he's called in a correction, so I don't necessarily see all those, those other two line items. As far, I only see the Marine Grant or any other grant stuff that he does for us. So his average hours from Marine Patrol?
No.
For bailiff.
Thank you for what you're doing right now.
Right now, I average about two days a week.
So I would think Mr. Eber could cover that.
Well, yeah, I guess I'm just questioning the fifteen dollars an hour times forty hours a week for seventeen weeks for an eight-year pay period. That's not what he's currently working right now, so why would we pay for that kind of?
I just chose the fifteen dollars an hour because that's what the sheriff's office was paying him as part of the part-time seasonal rate. I just chose the fifteen dollars an hour because that's what the sheriff's office was paying him as part of the the part time seasonal rate. So and I believe Deputy Better was agreeable to that fifteen dollars an hour to a train. So I did not even look at his bailiff. Hourly raise rate or the sixteen dollars. We could consider sixteen dollars of the transport rate.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm just at, I'm just questioning what he's, how many hours he's putting in right now? And then how many hours of school is it per week?
That'd be forty hour school weeks.
So forty hour school week? And no overtime?
No overtime in this scenario.
And how long is the school?
Seventeen weeks.
Go back and take a look at calculations for our obligations as an employer. When it comes to, and I believe we break it into thirteen week blocks. And the test is for full time status and particularly for Affordable Care Act purposes. Uh it might be. Twenty six weeks. I don't know. We're gonna have to look at this just to make sure we're not missing something that we're obligated to do. And this is the federal law that that I'm concerned about. We can get together and talk about that and figure out what we need to do.
I I got a couple of questions.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
So isn't, isn't, from what I'm hearing on my end, isn't this basically what we just did was sponsor two individuals through the academy? Aren't we doing the exact same thing that you're discussing besides now sending one to Kirtland?
This is different in the fact that one, it's part time. And two, this particular situation, Michigan Works is going to pay for the training. As opposed to the county. Um through his conversations, Michigan Works, he qualifies for the particular. Monies that are being allocated for the training. So the previous ones, we we had set up for correction officers being sent through with our policy and the one year. This particular one is different in the fact that Michigan Works qualified him. So it's an opportunity for us to pay part time wages to get that training. Because of his qualification at Michigan Works. Does that make sense for you?
Yeah, it just kind of stinks because I know it was possibly an opportunity last time and it wasn't really followed up on. But my my other question is, is where will these funds come from to pay for his salary while he's attending school?
Good question. I mean, I, we would take it from our salary from the. Uh I don't know if it would come from the two fifty nine or if we would take it straight from the three oh one budget. Uh we we currently are not fully staffed. We still have the one position that's baking the two fifty nine. Um so we're not paying out wages for there.
Wouldn't be two fifty nine eligible.
Wouldn't it be two fifty nine eligible? So we would have to look at the three oh one budget. As far as for part time wages to fit it in.
Who are you dealing, who are you talking through at Michigan Works, Paul? Who's who's the individual that's helping with this? Do you mind if I ask?
Gene Hollenbeck.
Okay. So this individual, he's going for this certification um or or this education to then work. I I I probably just didn't hear something. I apologize. To work the ORV grant or that's what he's doing now?
No, that would be his primary focus moving forward would be the ORV grant. He he performed Marine Grant service for us. But that's not M. Cole certified requirement where ORV is. Because it enforces the motor vehicle code and a few other factors. In order to receive funding for the ORV grant, you have to have the M. Cole certification, which is to be a law enforcement officer. So we would look to utilize this position to make sure that we use that ORV grant moving forward.
Who who worked this year for the ORV grant? Who who worked those duties?
We had uh two part timers. One was uh Chief Coleman did a few hours for us as he was was available. And our primary other deputy was Schrum. They say his name wrong, Schrum. Uh but he just, because of his other employment, he was so busy over the summer that he wasn't able to give us the hours that we needed.
How much is that grant for ORV?
Ten thousand dollars we have for this grant season.
And do you have a description of the training program from Kirtland that you could get us?
I do have a lot of their materials that were sent during the last research, so I can make sure that that gets sent.
What's the cost of the training?
Cost for training, do you remember what's Kirtland's charge?
Eighty nine hundred dollars as well. Michigan Works is gonna be paying. Jenny, did you hear that?
Yeah, those are figures I already knew.
It's hard to, it is hard to. I gotta tell you, it is hard to hear from the audience. When I was on the Zoom call last week. You couldn't hardly hear the audience.
I I'm I'm sorry. I'm just, now, if I remember right, I think I signed something on that ORV grant. It was five thousand, it was five thousand this year, right?
Uh I recall it was ten thousand that we were awarded this year. The five thousand uh is a snowmobile grant. Cause I was concerned about our level of grant funding because of last year's activity. I was assured that we would wouldn't receive a reduction. And I recall atop my head that it was ten thousand for ORV and five thousand for snowmobile this this uh this season. But I'll verify that and get that sent out also.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So the second is just basically uh Deputy Better and myself. We came up with four USDA grant applications and they all referenced a potential vehicle purchases. Um needed for the Sheriff's Office, Animal Control and the Corrections Department. The the first one you'll see is in reference to a sheriff's office vehicle. The grant and proposal would be for a new Ford F one fifty four wheel drive. And uh a new, an American, oh wait, I'm reading the animal control. So the animal control vehicle would be the four wheel drive Ford F one fifty and it would come with extended cabin and eight foot box. This grant application also includes the purchase of the new uh American pickup truck animal control containment slide insert, which has sixteen compartments. Our current vehicle for animal control was purchased used. I don't have the exact mileage, uh but it is up there in miles. And it's starting to cost us some repairs to keep it roadworthy. I think it still has some value. Um but this was just an opportunity to supplement something with USDA. Now, none of these grants are approved. Basically, the process is, I understand it is that we put this together, we sign it, we submit it to USDA. And then they make the funding decision from there. They could fund one, they could fund all four. But unless we submit them for consideration, they won't be considered.
Right, and you need a vote to do that. No, uh one question, um discussion we had back a ways. Did we compare to anybody else's animal control?
Uh this was based on the research that Better did on on a couple of different ones. During the counties right now currently utilizing that certain box. Uh as it is aluminum and it is powder coated. So it it should be able to be transferred to other vehicles down the road and should not wear out as quickly as one that we currently have. Hopefully that's uh that's why that's a little bit more money currently, but a lot of other counties are utilizing that because of that. Be able to re cash it on the.
Okay, good enough. Thank you.
So then the second one is then where I started is a Ford F one fifty is a Super Crew four by four police responder. Pickup truck and included in the grant proposal, USDA is in a twenty twenty one alumacraft boat. Um this is a pickup truck boat purchase combined. It would give us, the sheriff's office, the opportunity to have a pickup truck for transporting our different uh vehicles, like the ORV, the boats. During the season uh would also provide us opportunity for, say, crash response with scene management for large evidence. Collections and that type, having a pickup truck in our fleet. And uh with the grant application. We have a boat, but this boat is pretty much past its prime. Is in desperate need of to be replaced. That would give us two boats again. Uh new boats, newer boats in our fleet to perform marine functions moving forward. So just an opportunity to combine the two into a grant. Uh if awarded, we'd basically be paying the county price for the the price of a pickup truck and getting two for one. The my deal price for the pickup truck alone is pretty close to what the county portion of that particular USDA grant would be. So that was the second one. Uh the third one, oh, go ahead.
Let's go one by one here. Is the boat my deal?
The boat is my deal also, or?
The boat does not buy qualify for my deal. Okay. I I think the really, for my deal is government is vehicles currently in the state of Michigan.
Okay. Are we?
That is true. The purchase of the boat would be through Lakeside Motorsports over in McCosta. They are the. Got uh probably eight, ten different quotes on boats throughout the state. Uh they were the cheapest.
Well, we, this would be over the threshold for bid action. We'd have to bid that according to our. Our rules. You know, if it was my deal, we can skip that because it's my deal, you know, because there's no competitive bidding in my deal. But yeah, we'd have to, because of that price, that that expenditure amount, we'd have to bid.
The boat, the boat motor and trailer alone. Twenty seven thousand, I believe.
Sure. Why, yeah, I bet it is. Absolutely. Yeah.
Like I said, all comparable quotes were much higher.
Well, sometimes uh once you lay out the parameters you gotta have and then put it out for a bid. And they know that the money, they don't have to worry about us stopping to finance something. They can, they'll get competitive then, you know. But I just wanna know if it was my deal. And the other, the only other thing I would suggest. Is go bigger with the truck. Go go three quarter ton or one ton. You just don't know what you're gonna get into later on. We might buy a triaxle trailer or something.
Right. Here here's why we went with that particular vehicle. Ford is only manufactured currently making pursuit rated truck. And that's the truck we went with. Um should the event that it needs to be utilized. Respond to scenes. I think uh last year I used lights and sirens responding to scenes three different times, just on bolt stuff. That's why we went with that particular vehicle because it is pursuit rated, um which it means it's. Able to handle those higher speeds to get to a a scene at a time with fashion. I was going three quarter, one tons. I see what you're saying.
Well, I'm more, I'm thinking more of a utility vehicle and I'm thinking uh there's a lot of fire departments out there that got. Lights and sirens and are responding to emergencies, but they're a lot bigger trucks than this.
Absolutely.
You know. Um I think the primary use, I'm looking at the primary use, not the, I guess, not the. Might happen use, you know, because I'm hoping that I'm not gonna see this as as a patrol vehicle, this one. Right, I'm thinking the utility use.
Yes, it would be more of a utility use or transport to.
Go ahead, Jenny.
Am I, am I understanding this correctly? This is just your, your, you're applying for these grants, correct?
Yeah, this is just discussion. We put together these applications to see if the board was interested in submitting these. To see if USDA would then give their portion. So this is just the beginning discussion of four grant proposals that were put together.
Are there any stipulations? Are there any stipulations with these as far as how those, the the truck, the boat, how those can be used?
No, I. The the USDA grant we use for purchase of patrol vehicles in the past uh was used, I think, for the last Ford Explorer. So it's, they just, they help fund police vehicles and municipality vehicles. By uh share of the the cost, so.
Is it a hundred percent covered? These grants is a hundred percent covered?
It's not a hundred percent. It's fifty five or sixty forty roughly. Fifty five forty five.
Ten on three.
Oh, yeah, all these grants will be fifty five forty five. So on the inside of each of those jackets, if you have not seen, is a breakdown of costs. And then it has on the inside of the jacket USDA portion and that would be the county portion.
And we're not under any obligation, even if they approve the grant to utilize it. We can look at them. I mean, I, you know, I will submit all four of them. If they're all four of them are approved, then pick and choose what we want to do. I've worked with USDA grants in the past. It's stupid not to. Let's look and see what they are willing to give us and if we can afford it, let's do it. If not, so be it. Nothing positive with the time they've already put into it. Now, when you put in for these grants, getting one of these grants, does it have an effect on the next one that you get?
They will, they said, we've been advised they'll they'll fund as many as they're willing to. So we uh one, two, or four, just depends on what their decision making process. So we could potentially get all four, or they might say, no, we're only gonna give your county one or maybe two. So what you're saying.
Would we be able to decide which ones we wanna get at that point?
Yes, I, you would be able, I was kind of thinking that this would help support the, like, the ARPA money and stuff and make stretch that out of. Say, the animal control truck. That was one definite priority for the county. If USDA would pay their portion of it fifty five, then that would just help the county be able to use that ARPA money. Or county money somewhere else as opposed to purchase that vehicle. So we just thought this would be a discussion point for these particular vehicles. That have been discussed or are looked at as being needed.
And again, what is your, what is your priority on the vehicles?
Well, the animal control would come out of its own budget. Um the priority of the. The vehicles that we have here would be the pickup truck. Jail again would be out of its own budget. You know, I would, I would put those two side by side if we were looking at.
Which one do you want?
Which one do you want? And then the fourth one is just to look at continuing our fleet. So that next year we can start phasing out the ones with a hundred sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand on. And move forward maintaining a safer fleet and and that type of thing. So that that fourth one that's on there for the Ford uh Explorer or Interceptor is. Just because we're submitting grants, see what they would be willing to fund. Now, the third one is also for. A uh Explorer type Ford utility vehicle. That one would be used primarily for transport. So when I discussed it with Lieutenant Oger, the the newest jail transport van has over a thousand, a hundred thousand miles on it currently. So that utility vehicle we use for some of the long distance, say Detroit, some of the pickups of of inmates that are coming back to the county jail. Save miles on the larger vans. And the utility vehicle would be able to allow us to maybe make one or two stops along the way. During that transport. So we thought if USDA would give us money towards that, we could put that into the jail fleet to save gas money. To save wear and tear on the big transport vans. Um we looked at a towel, but unfortunately, when the research was done on that. Was over a year out and they wouldn't even give a price on a quote. Because they didn't know what it was gonna cost a year, year and a half out the road. So we opted now to. See if they would fund this, to put this in the fleet, to maybe see some gas savings, give the the savings on the the big vans. So that's the third one. And then the fourth again is just another Explorer to expand our fleet with the objective of. Starting to get rid of the older ones next fiscal year and starting to rotate patrol vehicles.
So as of right now, um how many transport vehicles do you have?
We have two. One, well, we, I think that we have three, but one I took out of service. It's got three hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. The other one's like, uh I guess it's roughly a hundred and eighty thousand. The newest one's got over a hundred thousand. If we could prolong the van, the newest van, it's got a hundred thousand going back and forth to court, dragging ten to fifteen inmates back and forth. It'll last a long time. We use an Explorer to run to Detroit. We could put three inmates. So if we pick an inmate up in Detroit on the way back, which happens often, they get a call, you got one in front to pick up, we could actually get probably three inmates in a trip on that. Saves a lot of mileage on the van. Wear and tear, the vans will last a lot longer.
The van that we, the newest one that we got, wasn't that two years ago that we just got?
It's a, I think it's a seventeen.
I think it's.
I was just looking at those. It is a seventeen.
Seventeen, yeah, so it's four years old. It's almost.
We, I was, I was a commissioner when we got that.
But we, we, I was, I was a commissioner when we got that, so. That had to been an eighteen when we got it.
I believe we got it. I believe we might have got it early eighteen.
You're talking about, so in three, in three years, we're putting a hundred thousand miles on it. All right. Just trying to get a. Estimation of how long they're gonna last.
And then you're taking a twelve passenger van and, you know, you're picking somebody up in Detroit that. You're, you're pulling that big one ton van all the way to Detroit and back, the fuel, wear and tear. Whereas it's not as hard on an Explorer or an SUV as it would be a big van too.
Can you expand on? How many trips we make to Detroit and, and why we have to go down there?
Exactly how many Detroit? No, but we go all over. I mean, COVID's actually slowed it down, but that's not gonna last forever. Um, but we get pickups, you get a felony statewide pickup anywhere in the state, we're gonna get them.
Okay.
Um, there's, there's body only warrants. There's some warrants that it might be a misdemeanor. We'll just say by release, we're not gonna drive three hundred miles. To pick up, uh, driving a suspended license, especially with COVID and everything else, wanna. Um, so I could tell you how many, but it happens quite often. And then we get rid. Have an inmate in, in jail in Clare Colony or Flint or anywhere and, um, they get ready, we have to pick them up for court and then take them back. That's another instance where we'd use a SUV would be a lot less wear and tear in a van.
You also have any questions?
I think what your question was, why we go, it's because somebody's got a warrant, they get arrested someplace.
Correct.
They check, they find out they're wanted here.
Correct.
And then we determine we wanna go get them to take them to court.
Correct.
Yeah. Uh, no, you know, the, 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 the fourth one there, the explorer, that. Every year I've been here, we bought a police car and use USDA. I understand that. We can talk about how we're gonna fund it later, but anything for the jail, we got a commissary fund that we can use for that. And we have in the past and we even bought police vehicles with that commissary money. I know. The first year I was here, I told couldn't, then miraculously we did. But I won't point it further.
Not to my head, I don't know. I, it's.
I'm kinda. Frank and Craig Manning, it's in the two hundred thousand range. It was up there quite a ways.
The, the second transport van?
No, the, uh, commissary.
I mean, I know we committed some. Budget, but there was a pretty generous amount, yeah.
I believe the last one was two ninety four.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly. Um, I don't know if anything's been removed from that or not. I haven't spent.
Now, if we take a prisoner on the boat with us, we can probably.
Well, you could stretch that if you'd like to.
The Bush Blank Island for the rest. Questions, Jenny?
Um, I don't think so. I think, yeah, again, it obviously, yes, apply for them. You know, the next question is, is where's the funding gonna come from? But I definitely agree with the animal patrol vehicle. What'd you say, Commissioner Serbrook?
I would just said, we'll cross that bridge when it comes to, and if they approve the grants, we'll figure it out from there.
Right, that's what I, that's what I said. That, that'll be the hardest part is figuring out where the money's coming from, but I definitely agree with the animal control.
I'd say Google and see if we can get a grant for the boat. It won't be USDA, it might be Coast Guard. I don't know.
We're not in a great way for any of those because we're not, we're intercoastal or no.
Well, I'm just saying, somebody, you know, because we got a, a property owner association bought the last boat.
My, my only, I'm sorry. My only other question was just making sure that the, didn't have to be utilized, um, in a certain way.
As far as the boat, I mean, I, I can get with you. If we put it all for bid, we could still lump it into that USDA at that point if we met the bid requirements. Could we not?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so if we went out and bid competitive bids and then redid the grant, just show on the competitive bids, then. We should still be able to submit. So we'll just, we have to clean up that competitive bid on the boat.
Yeah.
To meet the requirement.
We've got quotes already, so you've got the material, the numbers you need to put the application in at least. And we go from there, um, but that'd be probably the type of price we would try to target, you know, to be consistent with that. But yeah, yes. Okay, it's the process that we do, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and that is necessary. If you saw the applications on there, it does require the board chair signature. And that only happens when the board says.
Do you have enough time by next week to do that?
Yeah, so there's no, I mean, there's no rush, uh, as far as the timeline. It was just discussion if we get signatures, then we send it in.
Okay.
And wait for the response, so.
Sounds good. Thanks, guys.
I know it's a lot of questions, but thanks for all the information. This is great.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
All right, uh, three E, Ryan Veder, planning and zoning administrator.
Hey, what do you got for us here?
So real quickly, um, I've received some correspondence. The planning commission is currently looking at some ordinance amendments. One of those amendments is a little bit. Been a little bit more, um, time consuming for planning commission than the other ones have been. Um, but as, as a part of that, we, I received some correspondence from some individuals. That were specifically addressed to the county commissioners, um, felt it was proper to pass that along. There are kind of a couple of different perspectives that we're dealing with as far as this, this camping ordinance goes, um. You know, we do have the homeowner perspective. We do have the, the individuals that have camper perspective. Then there's the perspective of, of the planning commission and, um, so this is one side of it. Um, particularly in our planning commission meetings, we are, we are seeing the, uh, a big response, especially in our last two meetings from. From individuals that own campers and their, their problems and their concerns as well too. So, um. I merely wanted to make sure that you are aware of this, um, eventually. When we get to that point where the planning commission has decided on a, a draft. And has approved a draft, that will come in front of the commissioners for their approval. So, um, just more or less to keep you updated of what's going on. Answer any questions you might have.
Read through this and, uh, I also saw some of the pictures, uh, that you sent along. Any, uh, opinions on, uh, where we're at, where we're at with this?
Oh, Ryan, I can tell you, this is in the last two days and I don't know what. What's happened in the last few days. Um, I've probably gotten twenty phone calls. And everybody that's called me said. They don't like the proposed ordinance. I was at a township meeting last night. The entire township board said, we're against this. Um, I've got nothing but negative, you know, from everybody that's contacted me. And you know, and I'll be honest with you. Some of the suggestion, uh, uh, from this township board that I was at last night was if it's a problem specifically. To Wake Oglema area, then Mills Township and Churchill Township should enact their own ordinances and hire one ordinance enforcement officer to do it. They don't feel that it's fair across the county because certain areas don't mind Joe Blow with five acres. Leaving a camper there three hundred sixty five days a year, you know?
Sure.
So, I mean, you're gonna get, I, I realize that's a hotbed. But this is the feedback I'm getting right now.
And it is a touchy subject because we are dealing with, um. All but three municipalities, um, from a zoning standpoint, um, you go to Rose Township. And you're, you're looking at a different area than you are in Mills Township than you are looking at the areas around Lake Oglema as well too. So, um. So, so part of that is as well too, is listening to both sides, kind of. Trying to cater something which is gonna be difficult.
Fair and equitable. I, I completely understand.
So. The other concern as well too, and, and one thing, um, I think planning commission and not only that the commissioners will have to look at too is, um. What, what direction do we wanna see, see our county move into as well too? There are definitely pluses and there are minuses to both sides of the issue, um. And, and unfortunately, when you have a, a sticky topic like this, we, we have individuals that are looking at. Their particular, how it affects them. And as a planning commission, we do kinda have to look at how it affects everybody. Um, there, there is some negatives that. Could come from allowing campers full time on vacant parcels as well too.
I totally agree.
There are, and.
Especially if they don't have a sewer or a holding tank.
Sure, a holding tank, but then we're, but we're also looking at, you know, transient people as well too. The quality of those people and, and you, you don't ever wanna discourage people from coming to your community. But it could have a positive and negative effect both ways as well too. So it could, could cause people not to build here. It could cause people not to come here or. It could create an influx of people here, some of which would be beneficial, others may not be beneficial. So, um. We are taking the time to the planning commission. We are, we are listening to those people, um. We're, we're doing some research. Um, some of the research we have done is look at the municipalities around us and the other ones in the state to see. What they offer, um. At, at this point in time right now, I have not come across the zone community that allows campers three hundred sixty five days a year on a vacant piece of par. Property, um, so that's something to consider as well too. So, um. We, we do have to look at it. I, there was one statement made at our last meeting from a gentleman that has property here but lives in Warren. Warren obviously does not allow that to happen. So, so what is the difference between Ogma County and the city of Warren? Obviously, lots, lots of differences, but. Let's look at those and figure out what's best for everybody as best as we can, so.
Yeah, I was just relating to you what, what feedback I've gotten. Well, you know, and I'm sure there's people out there that are obviously.
I said on.
Obviously, there's people that are in favor of this.
Before you go much further, there is no proposed ordinance. Okay, there's a whole bunch of people out there that got an idea that there's a proposed ordinance. This is, this is a gentleman. This is not the planning commission's right.
No, but did not Ryan send us, uh, propose?
No, he sent you.
Change?
Some changes that we talked about.
Right.
But it's not laid out in a proposal for an ordinance yet. Okay.
Okay.
It's a working copy.
And I, 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 again, you know.
Well, but there's a lot of people out there and they're circulating a lot of stuff out there. And they came to this meeting with, 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 with the, with the rope and everything, ready to hang it, okay?
Imagine that.
And, and they're gonna, we're gonna sneak it upon them, just like, just like when they come here because. Because just like here, we have to talk about things in public.
Sure.
And they pick up on one sentence or paragraph and then they run with it and they say that that's what they're doing.
So, my question would be is, um. Why doesn't Lake Ogma Summer Resort Association or any other, um, uh. Subdivision, they have, they have their own rules. Why can't they just, um, enforce their, or adopt those rules and enforce them?
Can't do.
And beyond that, um, why don't we let the townships handle this? I mean, it just seems like there, there's too many different, uh, types of. Properties in our community. Um, I mean, there might be. A need to say in the city of West Branch, we don't wanna camp run.
Oh, Navin. City of West Branch.
If, if a person comes up here and buys a hunting property and they've got eighty acres and. Uh, they've got a, a, a camper on it, um. Unless they're polluting the, the ground, I don't really see that that's really a big issue.
Right, and, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of different, you know, the, you're packing in front of you with the pictures. Um, some of those pictures will depict some of the complaints that I'm getting. And there I, there are probably hundreds of campers out there that no one will ever complain about. They're, they're on large parcels or they're being respectful to their neighbors. Um. The, the reasoning for the regulation is, is, is more or less. To keep this before it becomes a huge widespread problem, um, or to. To be able to enforce them as well too, um. The language, the current language in, in the ordinance, which has not currently allowed campers to be on vacant parcels. For three hundred sixty five days a year, um, there's no change there. So there was a lot of information, disinformation out there about that as well too. But also changing some of the language to make it enforceable as well too. One, one language in there's, campers can be on a parcel for two hundred and seventy days out of a three hundred sixty five day period if they're connected to well and separate. Septic. When does that timeframe start? It's different for every person. It's different for every camper. So from an enforcement standpoint, um. I would literally have to be inspecting campers every day to, to see who's there, when they got there. And when they're supposed to leave. So, um. Most communities that have some camping or language in there, they've set a definite timeframe. So. Um, West Branch Township, for instance, just one locally is April first through November thirtieth. So, so if that camper is there. On December fifteenth, we know it's not supposed to be there versus trying to track. Hundreds of campers in their two hundred and seventy day out of that three hundred sixty five day period. So, um. That's one of the issues with it as well too. So, um. But a, but a lot of things to consider, um, and, and for instance. You know, a lot of times we have laws or we have regulations that are set up because. Uh, it's because we've, we've had, there's a few that don't follow them, so it affects the many. While in this particular case. It's the many that probably aren't filing, following the ordinance that are affecting the few that are. So, um. And, and it's understandable from their standpoint, um. The, the good thing about this process is it is getting that information out there. Um, now I will tell you, there are a lot of people that weren't aware. That their camper couldn't be on their property three hundred sixty five days a year. There are a lot of people that are aware when they bought their property. That their camper couldn't be there three hundred sixty five days a year. So, um. The, the Facebook, there's some misinformation on Facebook about it and, and about our procedure as well too. I, I'm not gonna go into that. The good point about that is, is it's getting it out there, um, and you, you know, as well as I do. To make informed decisions, you need to have as much information as possible. So, um, the good thing about this is bringing some of that information to our attention. And there are some building code issues, um, there are some liability issues from the, from the county standpoint that I'm concerned about. Even when we do the right thing, for instance, the building department. Remove somebody from their home or kick somebody out of their home because it's not safe there. Let's say their furnace is venting and it's. Pushing carbon monoxide into their house and they could get sick and die because of it. Um, even when we do those things sometimes and we remove somebody for, for good reason, protect them. The county actually is still liable for that as well too. So. So that's one end of the issue too, and just making sure we're, we're putting people in safe environments and safe conditions as well too. Obviously, you can see from the pictures, there's a wide variety of the quality of campers and how they're kept and, and, and how people keep them up. So. Just like building codes, those change through the years. I'm sure those codes for campers change through the years as well too. Things become more restrictive, products get better, materials get better, um, things of that nature too. So. There, there is a lot involved with it, um.
There's been a lot of ideas. I mean, we've talked about lot size, property size. We've talked about that. It's not, and we're not over with it. I mean, not by any means. I mean, we understand the eighty acres, you know, six hundred and forty acres. We understand that, but.
And we do wanna be careful, not only from a safety standpoint, we wanna be careful that we're not destroying or hurting people's property values as well too. Um, we wanna make sure that we're, we're encouraging people to come up here. Um, and you've seen with COVID, people are leaving the big cities, um. With technology, you can now work in Ogma County for, for GM and, and do a lot of your job. And you're seeing that a lot through Michigan and probably all over the US, um. So we're gonna have more and more people moving up here as well too. Um. We, we do wanna make sure we're not hindering the tax base. Campers are not a taxable. They cannot be taxed on property, um. And they are not built, built to building code standards. So, um, so those are all things that we have to consider in, in way.
Any other questions?
Well, I think a lot of it comes down to, to, um, it should go back to the townships because it's a light issue. Um, I've seen a lot of that personally up in Hilltown. I've seen a lot of that personally up in Hill Township, that, you know, yeah, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be gone.
And unfortunately, from our standpoint, that the county doesn't enforce blight.
Right.
I mean, we do have some regulations, um, number of vehicles and what can be stored on property, and this is essentially a storage issue as well too. It's not a permitted use, it's not, it can be conflicting with single family dwellings or, or people's homes as well too. So it's something we do have to be careful with. And the, the blight issue, um, a lot of the townships have blight ordinances. I don't know how effective they are being enforced or, or how they're being taken care of, but. In some instances, I, some of the complaints I do receive are, are more from a blight's perspective. And that may be because the township is not enforcing their blight ordinance, um, so it, it's. It is a layered, it's a, it's a layered problem.
It's definitely a very opinionated, because, uh, you couldn't, I know a couple of townships that have had some blight issues and, uh, there, there definitely isn't a. Concerted, uh, uh, opinion all the time. One person's junk is another person's treasure, so. I, I think the townships really need to make a lot of these, these decisions on what they think is appropriate for their area.
And, and we do have to look at that, I, I'm not so sure if the township without their own zoning ordinance. Recreational vehicles and land uses are within the, the Michigan Planning Zoning Enabling Act and the, um. So those are authorities that are granted to us from the state. Outside of a zoning ordinance, I don't know if an individual township could have separate camping ordinances. Now you had mentioned homeowners associations as well too, if they're registered properly, they can actually. We, we would still have some jurisdiction over them, so we could set, let's, for instance, let's use the seven hundred and twenty square foot. Minimum requirement for a house, so homeowners association could say on our properties and our association. We require two thousand score fee. They can't allow less than what we allow, but however, they could be more stringent as well too. And, and maybe that is one of the solutions to this, especially around Lake Ogumah and some of the lakes is. Um, formation of more homeowners associations. One thing to consider though is with those homeowners associations. That wooden word in there is home as well too, so, um, that can be, that can be issue as well too, so.
Well, if you're calling it recreational vehicles, how many boats are stored out there, how many snowmobiles are stored out there, how many, you know?
Right, there's another can, can of worms for storage, currently right now, we do have, we have businesses that are storage lots, um. We, we had one about a year and a half ago that we approved up in, I think it was Hill Township and. Because of the feedback that we did receive from the neighboring properties, um, there's a residential parcel to the east and a. Deer Preserve to the north of it. They'd like to see some sort of screening, so we did, we did require them to put up some privacy fencing, um, to shield them from neighboring uses. Um, and that's to be able to store boats, campers, RVs and things of that nature outside too, so. With those particular, with a special use permit, those individuals get notice of what's coming in around them and have an opportunity to give us. Their concerns with it as well too, camping if it's open. Wide open, doesn't require permit or any other uses or any other permissions, then. There could be some issues, um, in fact, and I don't think it's a mash matter, if it could.
You, you, you go back to the sixties and seventies and the mobile home came into effect. And ten years later, it was like ordinances were coming in all over the place, that's where minimum, minimum housing, uh, uh, minimum sizes came in. So people weren't buying eight by thirty-five trailers and, and living in them and, and bringing them in from wherever.
But again, I, I agree that there's different townships, different standards. You got a tiny, tiny house manufacturers or?
Well, that's another, that's a whole.
Shanny, did you, do you have?
I did, um, Ryan, I, I got that in my mailbox, thank you for that, it's, it's, it says it's the proposed changes. For the camping and for the recreational vehicles, and obviously this is a pretty, pretty touchy topic. In, uh, my townships and my village, um, that's brought up, I believe, every meeting. I mean, I appreciate you're taking both sides i- in the play with this, um, definitely need some updated to this ordinance. Um, a couple of questions I have, or I guess first would be a statement is obviously I don't think. You go looking for any trouble unless there's obviously a complaint. From, uh, surrounding.
Yeah, unfortunately. I, I, I just don't have the time to drive around looking for violations, so complaints are, are the number one, the number one way for that. Obviously, it, it's, it's also good from my standpoint as well too. I'm receiving an, an actual complaint from a person, an individual or a property owner, it's not me driving around picking on people, so. So, and, and we know, cause we discussed it numerous times, there are some, there is some language in the ordinance that. Has prevented us from enforcing it as well too. People will become creative and, and work around ordinances and, um, anytime you're dealing with an ordinance or enforcement issues. Legal can be involved as well too, so we've gotta look at how things are worded, um, as well too, so. Many, many challenges.
My, my other statement was I, I'm gonna disagree with, with some of the other commissioners here, at least my townships, my townships in my village. Tends to fall back on the county ordinance, um, for this and for guidance. Um, my other, my other question, my only question I guess is, is Ryan, if it were updating this and making these changes, which I think are good. How, how is this gonna be enforced?
Um, once again, um, through complaints as well too, li- like I said, there is. Yeah, I've never heard from an individual that has a camper parked in the middle of their eighty acres. There are campers, well, I take that back, I have, I have heard from one individual that had a camper where nobody would see it. Unfortunately, it was a, a dispute between a boyfriend and girlfriend. But for the most part, y- yeah, the enforcement would, would have to come through, through complaints as well. And, and we're gonna see more of them in, in some municipalities than we are in others, um, some people are a little bit more tolerant with it. Majority of the homeowners aren't gonna come to the, the planning commission and, and complain to us because they don't have anyone next door to them that are doing it, so. I, I have, I have, um, some videos from one specifically in Mills Township that's very disturbing. Which questions, you know. Which questions, you know, how, how far we need to get involved with this, obviously, that particular one. Is probably, it's a dangerous situation, or it could become a dangerous situation of a property owner that's being threatened. Um, by individuals that have been living in a camper for, for six years, for simply turning on their porch light when they're being noisy. So there, there, it may fall down to some of the townships as well too, and, and how they wanna, how they want it enforced as well too. Mills Township I know has an enforcement officer, um, he's not, I don't believe he's out actively enforcing our ordinance, but. He, he is aware of our ordinance and what the rules are as well too, so it may have to be a collaboration. Between the townships and, and myself as well too, or enforcement officers.
Thank you. Any other questions? Next on the agenda, uh, Michael Faye, probate court.
Well, our, our topic won't be as exciting as the rest. We're gonna talk to you about tables and chairs. Obviously, as you know, our building's getting closer to completion across the street, um, I was over there last week, they were taping and mudding, so. Hopefully the next month we'll, we'll be ready, um, that brings to the forefront, we have to put some furniture, tables and chairs in there. We, we're looking at maybe the, the type of, I don't know what they call them, the tables that kinda. Fold up and wheels, you can move around and rearrange and reconfigure and stuff like that. Uh, we're looking for chairs similar to this, except for probably either hard plastic or like a leather or vinyl, so you can clean. Easily instead of cloth chairs, uh, we're looking at like a home brand of, of decent quality, not like necessarily a top end, but not the. Something that's gonna last more than a year. We're looking at a few of the, a little nicer chairs in the therapy rooms for the therapy to take place. Um, we have in our little storage area, the, the stairwell over there. A couple of desks and file cabinets, a cardenza and stuff we're gonna use, so we don't need that. We had a grant that we bought all the appliances for, those, those are stored all over, over in the sheriff's department, the refrigerator stove. Dishwasher, washer, dryer, refrigerator, so we have all that, now we just basically need some tables and chairs. Um, the, we started putting this together and, and kinda visualizing how many of these things we're gonna need. And you'd surprise how much chairs cost nowadays, uh, but we, we basically did two different methods. We, we obviously would love to stay local and get the stuff from local vendors, Michael and I went to West Branch Furniture, we went to Morris Clark. And we went to Office Central and, uh, West Branch Furniture doesn't carry the office line really, it's more of the. Living room stuff, uh, Morris Clark had a, had some inexpensive, but looked like pretty decent bedroom, cause we have to have like a little bedroom area for the overnight. Holdovers, um, then Office Central, uh, gave us a price on a lot of the, uh. It's pretty, pretty much everything else except for the tables. Then we went on the staples, the quill, the Amazons and, and did our research, their national business furniture. Pretty much everything we can get cheaper on Amazon, um, it's, I guess it's kinda up to you as to. How much that means to you to stay local as far as, uh, basically, we, we put together a list, I don't know if you don't have it, but. Getting, getting stuff locally, we figured it's about fourteen thousand dollars for everything. Using Amazon, it's about eleven-three, so that's about twenty-seven hundred dollars difference. Um, that's taking however, with, with Office Central, that's taking their standard price, we haven't talked to Mr. Rabbitu yet about trying to get a. Special deal, you know, cause, um, so that could come down a little bit, um, same thing with Morris Clark, we, we, we've got their pricing for the, uh. Bedroom stuff, um, and that was, that sticker price, they, they haven't furnished the numbers yet either, so that could come down a little bit. The only thing we can't find locally are these tables, uh, which Amazon has the best deal of about three hundred and forty dollars a piece for, we need eight of them. Those will conserve as our computer stations as well as our conference areas, so. I guess we're looking for, looking for a little guidance, my understanding, this is probably all come from ARPA money, um, but. The, I say, you want us to keep local as possible, but at what point? Does the, does the increased cost, you know, so.
Well, it's obviously taxpayer money.
It is.
Personally, I, I always try to, you know, at least stay within ten percent of what I wanna spend.
I think the rule is five, and we, I know we're over that, but like I said, we haven't talked to Mr. Rabbitu yet, so maybe we can get a little bit closer. Um, but we're looking at, we're looking at eight of the tables. We're looking at a headboard, a twin bed frame, a twin mattress. A basic dresser and nightstand to keep dresser, to keep the, the linens in and stuff for the, the sheets and stuff and the blankets. Um, as far as the, the chairs, we're looking for about fourteen, a very similar to this, but not, not cloth. Uh, those for, for the conference area, we're looking at four of the nicer, little bit nicer for the therapy rooms where. The child and the therapist can one-on-one with each other, a little pushier, a little, little nicer than an office chair. And we're looking at some, uh, the waiting room chairs. Waiting room and the computer station chairs, about nine of those total. And then a couple, couple end tables to put between the therapy chairs, so that's what we're. Looking for, uh, like I said, our, our cheapest right, right now is with Amazon and, and a lot of it's eleven-three ninety-seven. Creates, Amazon creates a lot of little problem in that. None of us have a credit card big enough to. Pay for that without, and, and so if I buy, you buy, I think our limit is thirty-five hundred, I think. If you buy thirty-four hundred dollars worth, wait till that bill's paid and, but you know, it's gonna take us six months to get her, to get all the furniture, so that's another little issue where. Working with Office Central, they just bill us, and that, that would be easier, but at the same time, again, it's taxpayers' money and we wanna get as, be as. Frugal as possible, so.
Always come to us and we can just hold for it too.
Yeah, and like I said, Mr. Rabbitu may be able to come down a little bit and, and Morris Clark might come down a little bit, I mean, she basically told us at Morris Clark that. Look, these are the sticker prices, we'll work with you with the package, but, uh, we didn't, like I said, we didn't, at that point, we didn't. Get final numbers, but you kinda just got an estimate.
Did we get a copy of that estimate there or? Given the total cost of this, but because they're separate, specific, separate items, would we be required? To competitive bids these, because I don't think any single item and looking at the sheet now. I mean, the most expensive one's forty-two hundred, I think our competitive bid is what, five?
Yeah, five thousand.
So as long as. Say the chairs are, you know, twenty-five nineteen, we don't need to bid, bid those out, as long as we're not looking at, this is a total package. Am I, am I correct there or?
You are.
Okay. Uh, below that number, the requirement is at least three quotes, which clearly the team has done.
Right.
Without, so as far as policies concerned, those, those requirements are all met.
Now, I did, cause I wasn't sure if, when we say competitive bid, if we actually needed to solicit a bid. Or if we just said, we looked at, you know, X, Y, Z, and these are the prices from X, Y, Z, X is the cheapest.
Yeah, the wording in that policy is quotes and that's what.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know if it meant if it was bid or if it was quote.
And I guess what we're looking, looking for from you is to give us, I don't know, a, a, I don't wanna say a budget, but something where we can get this ordered, get this coming. Um, and, you know, if Office Central can be within ten percent of the Amazon price, so be it. Um, but if not, we'll go with the, I, I, like I say, that's, that's where you guys come into play as far as.
I think the other issue we have with Amazon is our tax exempt status.
We're tax exempt with Amazon, which we.
Okay.
And, uh, Amazon's obviously no shipping, uh, Office Central, I, I bought a lot of furniture through the school and it was. They charge schools a lot of money, but I think that's just because of school furniture, but, um. I don't know if we're shipping, what talk to Mr. Rabbitu about that.
There's, there shouldn't be shipping on anything we purchase through Office Central, um, there, there, all of the, the quotes that you see are the cost that you see here. Um, and the online vendor option in the top section, um, those, uh, I don't think any of those prices, um, or none of those. Whoever vends through Amazon, um, they were all free shipping, um, now. I know I've gotten stuff from Amazon that's pretty beat up. Once you, yes, you know, sometimes when you get it, um, you know, I don't know what Mr. Rabbitu's shipping process is. You know.
Go through hers, but at the same time, we gotta be frugal, so.
Well, I think we all like it when we stay local, um, as long as, uh, it's competitive. Um, now, one of the other things they had a question on is, uh, is this all coming assembled or who is gonna be assembling?
I don't know that.
Um, I would guess that probably, uh, I mean, it's for, uh, full assembly, meaning a bunch of little tiny pieces, nothing that I've looked at. Um, oftentimes with, if you look at like the second item down the task chair, you're gonna have to put it into, um, you know, out of the base. There may be a couple of screws to hold the back on, um, I mean, there's certainly gonna, it's gonna involve work, but. Oh, he just volunteered, so. Fourteen of those chairs.
I'm gonna say if my, my opinion is, is, is that if they, they should be able to hopefully get within five percent, if they can't get within five percent locally, I would go with the Amazon.
There, a lot of local companies are starting to get a lot more competitive now, cause they're forming these buying groups so that they can compete with those larger companies.
And we tried to get with Sandy today before we came here, but we just couldn't make the connection and hopefully by next Tuesday, we'll, we'll. We'll, we'll get a firm, well, I know I can't do that, or I can do that, or it can match it, or it can come five percent. Um, and then hopefully next Tuesday you can give us approval.
Karen, in my line of sights here, could the board authorize a temporary increase in the credit card?
Michael and I talked about that. I haven't reached out to the credit card company because I'm not sure what decision you are gonna make tonight. Um, I could certainly throw an email out to my contact to see if that's a um, possibility.
I'd suggest if it is, that we would include that in the resolution, a temporary increase to give you the latitude you need, if that's the direction you go. And for simplicity, for the board, I would just suggest a resolution, but the do not exceed number. Uh, on it, and then just let the two of them work their magic.
Yeah.
So long as you're not exceeding that number, you'd be.
You should be able to do that, because I mean, I just did it through my bank. I raised my card.
Yeah, we, if, if we ended up buying everything online, we'd be roughly ten thousand.
So maybe. Confirm if we can do that. I, I suspect it probably is okay, because you know, we've had
what, three or four limits that we've increased already and not had a problem with.
Well, I do like the idea of um, just a temporary increase of something so that you can make a purchase.
That's why I just kind of, maybe to ask for one time. Yep. Purchase of up to thirteen thousand or whatever, you know.
The tables aren't really are on Amazon. We're good.
I mean, I, I went everywhere and, and the lowest, what you see online is the lowest cost option of every item.
A lot of places would double with. But, but this meets your needs. Not a big Amazon fan, but when it's, it is what it is, you know, you, sometimes you have the same piece of furniture for half the price, so. Furniture is not easy to get right now, you know.
We, well, yeah, they, they've, some options have shifted. They were in stock as of the, uh, this morning. Yeah.
It changes.
Yeah.
Quickly.
It does.
Any questions for us? Um, obviously after this, I can't think of anything. I know Miss Mc, Miss McDonald's working on a grant for some for lack of a better word, decorations or artwork or stuff like that to make it more homely. The may need some curtains and pots and pans and stuff, but I, I can't see anything major.
See more homely?
The computers have, the computers have been ordered. Um, those are being paid for through a grant as well, a hundred percent. Um, so we'll have four workstations for um, kids who are not able to successfully um, attend school. To have an option to um, attend court school um, with a supervisor where they can complete their work um, in the facility as well. Um, uh, and then he mentioned the grant for um, appliances as well, which were a hundred percent.
Cover a hundred percent cover twenty-five hundred dollars worth, I think. So we got everything we needed, so.
Now, did we need to approve those grants or do we already do that? I can't remember.
Um, no, these grants that, the grant, the, the RAC age, age grant, uh, which covered the cost of the um, what we didn't need a, or if it, if it was signed off on, it wasn't a full, remember. I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at you because we generally talk about it. Um, it, it was a, a, a fund of money that was um, given to the courts.
From age term from seventeen to eighteen.
So when they, when they started, when they moved seventeen-year-olds back down to juvenile court, we were asked to submit um, uh, any, any place where we thought we would incur expense um, that um.
So this was through the state of Michigan?
Through the state of Michigan.
Right. How this is different from a normal grant, like what we're discussing about earlier with USDA is this is the state's way of saying we're meeting our obligation under headly. Uh-huh. And the RAC, because this is a new requirement that came down on the county. So they were very good about the calling it a grant, but it really is.
Yeah.
They're meeting their obligation to us, covering those expenses. Some of those uh, automatic.
Yeah.
Do you need a resolution for next week for this?
Yeah, got it.
And as you said, that'll come with a cap and then we can work within that.
We will hopefully have information from Miss Rabbit who by that date, we'll get that to you, Tom, the kind of.
I can update, yeah, I'll update the spreadsheet, make sure it gets out to everybody. Um, Jenny, I'll make sure that you get a copy um, of this spreadsheet um, in your email uh, tomorrow morning.
Yep. Thank you.
Alright guys, thanks a lot.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Discussion items for a Ogumah County Kids Day as a public official program.
This is more or less uh, just an advertisement, I think, going on and has talked to most, found everybody in the room about it. Um, this is the, what you see on the iPads is just the um, you know, brief briefing of what it is. This is something where the kids would be here, sixth grade students on February tenth, they'd be here from nine until one, roughly. Um, the, the plan is right now, there'd be a pizza lunch probably served in this room. This is a day that would normally be a regular board meeting day, so that's why February tenth was selected, so that when they're here, they get the full experience of county government. Um, I don't think we'll be asking these kids to vote on anything, but that's your call.
No, this, this looks pretty cool.
Do we blame them?
They're here.
Well, Donna suggested to me that we let them pass a resolution of like no broccoli on Tuesday. Whatever, you know, just something. You know. Or something like that, you know, just a, a one time, you know, just to give them the, the taste of being able to vote, you know, discussion and so.
Awesome. That's great. Uh, for B, uh, I don't know. The materials management grant opportunity through Eagle?
Okay. Um, there is a, a couple of things that are in the packet here for you to take a look at too. This is a program that was uh, proposed to us through the Aranac County Conservation District. What this boils down to is money for planning to do resource recovery, uh, recycling. Uh, it's something that I know we touched on here in conversations on occasion. Uh, I can tell you that there is a strong likelihood within the next two years that there'll be legislation out of Lansing that's going to require counties to update their solid waste management plans and a large component of that. It's about resource recovery and how we can get uh, recycling to work in a county like Ogumah. This is planning money. It would not obligate us to implement anything, but it will give us an opportunity to look at the economics of it and determine whether or not a program would work or how it would work in the county. My experience is that we could get it to work. It's just at what level would we want to do it? Would we want to go with uh, system like's currently in place with a drop-off location, open certain hours? There are opportunities, more populated areas to do curbside recycling, although that's an ongoing cost, as Commissioner Scott knows well. Uh, is something that um, it, it's an obligation and it's tends to be pricier than a drop-off would be. Uh, there are other um, you know, things to explore, but what this grant would do uh, would, would allow us to take a closer look at that. And if we combine our efforts with another county, the state is offering additional dollars, do that with collaboration. And I can tell you with our population, there's no way we'll do it alone. So having another county involved, it's a good idea. I think it makes it more realistic. Uh, what we're looking for here is if you're interested, as I would put a resolution on for Tuesday that uh, would officially say that we're interested in teaming up with Aranac. And the Aranac Conservation District would uh, take it from there in terms of the administration, getting the paperwork filed uh, and getting the program up and running.
Two, my question is on the document from the state, which in our iPads is four B three. The grant period, told month, this is all grant, agreements must be completed by December thir- or fifteenth twenty twenty-one, which was yesterday.
That's right.
So are we a day behind the, are we behind the eight ball already?
Um, we normally would be, but uh, Dawn at Aranac County has been in contact with the state and let them know about the logistics of our meetings and how they're falling into play. Uh, so what my uh, uh, job is tomorrow uh, is to get ahold of Dawn to let her know what the feeling of the board was tonight. Uh, and then she will in turn let the people of the state know, if you're flat out against doing this, it would be important that we tell her that. That way she can go ahead and complete her application as a single county.
When I was reading this the other day, I looked at the date and I went, oh my god. So I'm, I'm in favor of the collaboration with Aranac. So that's my two cents.
What, what do, I guess I'm just not understanding, what, what are they going to do now?
They're gonna look at the market, if you will, of uh, Ogumah and Aranac County. Uh, you know, a lot of the pricing that you get for um, uh, your materials depends on how far it's gotta be taken and, and who's gonna know the logistics of collecting the materials. If we had uh, two or three drop-off locations in the county, somebody's gotta drive a truck out there to pick the material up when the containers are full. And you've gotta have a place to take the material. Does it cost to take the material there? Do they pay you? Uh, getting all those kind of questions answered. Uh, and then if we're gonna do, for instance, a drop-off uh, uh, scenario, uh, how many drop-off sites will we need? Is three enough? Do we need four? And teaming this up with Aranac, uh, in theory at least, we'll get some economies of scale worked into this. It's not just us now, it's two counties where it makes it a little more attractive to and get your equipment uh, moving around and located where it needs to be. And certainly on the other end, when you're bringing uh, you know, more material in to be recycled, depending what the markets are, there could be a a bit of revenue that can be uh, had. I don't want to lead anybody to think that this is gonna be a revenue generator and to tell you right now, it won't be.
No.
So just, but there, there may be some opportunity here and there. Cardboard is uh, something that's been a commodity in the past that's been, you know, profitable, if you will. Uh, I haven't followed the markets of late, so I don't know where they, I haven't had to do that for seven or eight years since we did it at Disabella, so, but I know it was up and down quite a bit.
It's quite a discussion in the town.
I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm gonna put it out there. It makes me nervous doing anything with Aranac County right now after what they just did to us. So I, I, I'm hesitant to uh, do any type of partnership with them at this point in time.
Remember, this is the conservation district.
So conservation district.
I agree, but it's still Aranac County.
Well, let's not start a border war.
But uh, so we, Aranac is the only uh, county we could uh, reach out to, to partner with or?
Had I known about this, and it's only because I wasn't looking for it, um, you know, maybe we would have, you know, tried to get a couple of other collaborators. And this doesn't lock anybody out, uh, but it does get us funding in from the state to actually look at our county and then maybe uh, uh, you know, look at the question of, you know, who else, you know, should we be talking to Ross Common and Gladwin as well? Probably we should. But this um, you know, one of the more products can be to tell us.
It's just the planning. I mean, when you get the implementation, there might be, there might be state money if we get more of municipalities involved. But this is just planning. I mean, that's, this, this is a long drawn out affair.
So are we locked into this or?
Just locked into the plan, using the state's money to create it. And that's it.
Okay.
We have a solid waste plan already. If they're gonna want us to re, re-up it, we're gonna have to do that by statute and then oh, you know, um, there's, there's a component in the solid waste plan about recycling already. It's probably very small. I'm not really even don't even know what the solid waste plan is here exactly. Basically, in, in, because uh, uh, Michigan's a flow control state. So um, you have to in your plan say where your trash is gonna go. And things like that. Um, that's the biggest, probably the biggest part of it. This is, you know, materials man, man, you're, you're talking about, you, you can take this, this, this can be very broad. Be everything, everything out there that can be recycled and that's about everything we use. Or it can be focused down to just a couple of materials. I would, I would, I would bet that no county is gonna wanna do, do it solely themselves. They'll contract it.
Alright. Any other questions? Alright. Next on the list is uh, medical marijuana operation and oversight grants.
It's a time of year again. Uh, each year the state puts uh, monies out for Medical Marijuana Act grants. Ours have typically been administered by the health department. And in order to apply for the twenty twenty-two funding, the health department needs a resolution from the county uh, stating our interest in participating.
Oh, so we're not looking for the grant? They are.
They administer.
Yeah.
That was a, that was a lot of money. Is that the typical amount?
Four thousand and change, forty-nine. Forty-nine sixty-five.
I think it was five thousand this year, so I think it's actually.
That's, but I can't find it now.
Forty-nine, forty-nine sixty-five?
Alright. Any uh, questions or concerns?
They want us, so I'm in favor.
Yeah.
Give them what they want.
Jenny, anything else?
No, absolutely. I just was wondering if it was the same amount as last year. It was all I had.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to uh, KCC village update.
They're turning here.
Greg, are you on?
Yes, I am. Sorry about that. I, I just shut off my video because I was having my kids coming in and out and I didn't think you wanted to see them. Um, so kind of like um, an update for everyone. Um, we had talked a little bit about uh, earlier, you know, in the relationship about what the uh, uh, county could do. Um, and uh, as it relates to the act and actions that the county could take. Pursuant to some additional questions that were raised about what others can do. Uh, we, I wanted to bring to the board's attention that there um, is a ability for those citizens who are wishing to do a ballot proposal. Uh, have the ability to change the direction of both the uh, perpetual millage and the um, millages with sunsets on them. Uh, that ballot proposal is a typical ballot proposal that uh, we've all heard about, read about. And, and I'm sure there have been a number of them that have occurred uh, in uh, not a very complicated process, uh, the most complicated approved by the state in the submission uh, to the state of that ballot proposal. So I just wanted that to be out there. That is not something that the commissioners can suggest. Can uh, approve uh, or can direct to have happen, but it is always something that the uh, directors can uh, allow the public uh, to voice their concerns. If there are individuals that are interested in engaging in the ballot proposal process. Um, I am uh, available uh, and I uh, will not uh, charge uh, to speak with, to assist any of those individuals that may be interested in, in engaging this process. Uh, the typical ballot proposal fees are fairly expensive, uh, because it's a uh, a process of not only drafting of a ballot, uh, and uh, the signatures and guaranteeing of the signatures, but usually there's some form of promotional programs. But again, uh, those in the public that are interested in, in carrying this, uh, I am more than uh, willing to provide uh, full and complete pro bono services to take that ballot proposal uh, in the language, all the way up through the state approval. And then, you know, put it in their hands to acquire the required uh, signatures. The uh, other two, other quick updates, if I could do that, if you wouldn't mind. Um, we still have not received yet from the state of Michigan. Um, the hopeful win uh, that I acquired uh, on the probate case uh, situation where they were attempting to, the state deemed eleven of our um, contractors to be employees, which would uh, have resulted in two years of a number of different penalties and things. Uh, I believe we have that resolved, but uh, have not received that final disposition in our favor. Uh, and uh, last but not least, uh, I know that uh, I think it was Ryan or your zoning individual that was talking earlier today, uh, it really is a big, important issue. And although he may not have mentioned that we did. in fact, had a case and took it all the way to trial about five months ago involving a trailer that was on property and was claimed to be a property that they were only using it temporarily. But when you looked at the pictures of the snowmobile trailers and a shed, an actual real Home Depot type shed was installed on the property. We were able to successfully win that one. You may want to ask Ryan for some of those additional pictures because it really was horrendous in that regard. But other than that, I am excited about the opportunity to work with any of your citizens that want to move forward on the ballot proposal. And I just thank you guys for the wonderful opportunity to get to, to meet with you guys during the time that I had. And that's all, all I have for you, but thank you.
Greg, could you provide your phone number? We have somebody in the audience that I know is going to be ringing your office phone tomorrow morning.
Yes, sir. It is two, four, eight, six, seven, two, four, one, three, two. And I just want to be very clear. When I talk pro bono, I mean what pro bono means, and that is that there will be no cost or fees associated with the work that is necessary to get the draft, to get it approved, to get the documents all ready to go. And the only thing that I will not do is stand on the street corner to get signatures. But not that I'm, I'm against that. It's just that I don't know that I have the time to do that.
Thank you.
Greg, I don't know if you know this or not, but thank you, thank you for the pro, or the pro bono services, but what do you think it's going to cost our local residents to get this on the ballot?
Well, I ensure the local residents will find volunteers to get the signatures. My office and firm will provide all of the copying charges and necessary paper and copying facsimile and, and all of that. So the, the charges normally will be less than a thousand dollars in terms of any kind of submission fee that has to be done with the state or with the local. And then the only other cost would be if there is a large scale advertising campaign against the ballot proposal. The, the people attempting to try to get these millages removed either can decide to pony up some money and get some TV advertising or print ad or use word of mouth, but those were, those would be the other costs that one could expect to expend. But, you know, again, some of these ground swell types of cases I've seen win without putting one dollar in advertising anywhere else. And there had been usually some really good local papers or other types of publications, Facebook and others to get your message out without having to spend money. But from a legal cost, that's what you'd be looking for, much less than that. And depending upon how fast this goes, I'm pretty sure we could find a person to donate that money.
Greg, Greg, you, you only need signatures. I just want you to clarify one more time. You only need signatures from Ogumaw County residents, correct? And you only need eight percent?
Yeah, we don't need to go outside the other counties to get any kind of signatures. Excuse me. And based upon, I don't have my document in front of me, but my, my recollection is correct, is what you just said. I believe it is eight percent. I will take a look at that again, and if there is a correction to be made, be made on that percentage, I will let you guys know.
I got, the question I got with that, same thing. You're talking about affected taxpayers, not just any Ogumaw, because some Ogumaw taxpayers do not pay Curtland College taxes. So what if it's the affected, it'd be the affected ones?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
And you.
And that's a legal term, as you know, Mr. Scott. I'm just laughing when I say that. That's all smiling.
What, what, what?
The term affected.
Wow, yeah.
See, you used the legal term and you didn't even know it.
All right, thanks. That's.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right.
And gals. And Jenny, get healthy. You sound sick.
Yeah, thanks, Greg.
Bye bye.
All right. So next on the agenda is RV ordinance.
I have no update. Nothing else has come in.
We discussed it last time.
Hey, hey, Tim, can you send that back out to Mills Township? I had a meeting there Tuesday night and they didn't remember receiving it.
Okay. I guess, how many, how many townships or municipalities have responded back with anything?
I've had three.
Do you? To me, I, I think it's been three and two of those are going to get back to me.
Really?
Yeah. And one, I'm pretty sure it was City of West Branch. City manager had some comments that, you know, we're, we're good.
Right.
Yeah, I remember, I remember seeing the city of West Branch, West Branch Township.
Road commission, I think.
I relayed some information to you. But nothing in writing from them.
Nothing, no.
Well, I was really, I was really hoping, they always say they want to be involved and here we're giving them a chance to be involved. Just, just a response of, I'm okay with it. It would be fine. I mean, I just don't understand why they want to be involved, but they don't answer. You know, I guess that's with so many things. I guess we, what we got to do is just tell them that we're going to something drastic and then they'll go berserk and then they'll, they'll want to come to the meeting because you're, we're sneaking, we got to make it look like we're sneaking something out of them. I guess. Affected. Maybe it's affected.
Okay.
Okay.
Four F, ARPA.
Hey, you've got a list of projects that was updated and now we've got a couple of other updates to it. There is a letter that I've included from a district library. They put a number on their lost revenue, so you'll see that in there. I'm not sure we had that number before or not.
Yeah.
We also had the Northern Michigan Children's Assessment Center. And one of our last meetings had put in a request, so you'll see that on there now. And we also have the estimate from the Sting group. I remember that, it's a long time ago when Sting was in here, but it has to be put on the list. And it's looking like their request will be ten thousand dollars per year for four years, so forty thousand dollar commitment. Would take us through twenty twenty five if my math's right. Yeah. So that's, that's the update on it. We had our department head meeting on Monday, yeah, this last Monday, and I let departments know that we would like to hear from them in terms of any projects they have for the organization as we discussed at a prior meeting. And I would project by the second committee, the whole meeting in January, we compile that list and then we start looking at, you know, where priorities are.
Just to let you know, I, because I talked to both the generator from the commission on aging building. I talked to Mike Bowers yesterday. And he's going to submit a grant. He thinks there's probably a fifty fifty chance of getting some money. So we can maybe get some funds from emergency management. She's, we still don't have a price quote yet for the generator, but I'm hopeful that we will. So Mike's working. He's going to work with director of Carol Gill, the director of commission on aging and see if they can't get something together, but he says he thinks fifty fifty chance of getting some money, but so he's going to submit it and we'll see what goes from there.
So I've heard you're even a year and a half out even getting one installed.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
No.
Okay, next on the list is Grateful River Inter County Drain District. So Jenny, do you want to start?
Um, I, I can. In Brad, actually that meeting was Thursday. I'm sure everybody's heard how that meeting went. Probably don't need to give a brief, brief update on that, but I had an email that was sent to me Friday afternoon from Senator Vanderwall's office. Asking for an update on this and exactly what took place. So I, I contacted them immediately once I got that email on Friday and I set up a meeting Monday morning at eight thirty actually in Cadillac with Senator Vanderwall and Brad did go with me for that meeting. We spent about forty minutes one on one with him. I, I, I thought the meeting went quite well. Unfortunately, he wasn't very prepared for the meeting because again, it was from Friday afternoon to Monday morning. Requested further information going forward. And I provided Tim with those, the email and the contact. He seemed to be very interested in what was taking place. I'm not sure, Tim, if you've had any correspondence from them since. Unfortunately, I'm kind of out of commission at this time, so I, I I haven't been communicating a whole lot. So I don't know, again, Tim, if you've heard anything, but I found the meeting pretty productive. Brad, if you can add anything to that, I know they planned on reaching out to Farm Bureau. As we know, this is going to impact a lot of agriculture, a lot of farmers with this drainage district. So they, they plan on reaching out to them to get them involved as well. Brad, did you want to add to that?
Um, just that doing some investigating on the government's website with the Department of Agriculture. It looks like this has been going on for some time now. At least, I think back to two thousand eighteen. We're not the first one that this has happened to. And there's been a lot of money involved in these projects. From what I could tell, the company there, Spicer, was the contractor or whatever you want to call it in most of those projects. And that, the, the gentleman there from the state of Michigan, Michael Gray, I think his name was, was the chairman for a lot of those projects. Not always. There were, there were other people that worked for the state of Michigan that were also the chairman. Most of the time it was three person committees, sometimes four. I think the one that just happened in Saginaw County was a four person on, on that committee. I haven't been able to reach out to them to find out how that went. Or, or find their their opinion on the situation, but there's definitely lots of information on their website on all the projects that they are working on. Lots of bridges, lots of roads. Lots of drainage issues. There's, there's a lot going on there and definitely, definitely very, very concerning. I, I don't like the way it's happening. That's just my opinion. I don't like the way the committees are set up. I think they're very it's a pretty easy way to get something passed, that's for sure. But I'm no lawyer and I can't speak to it intelligently, but it definitely bothers me what's going on here. But I know that also, Tim, you got an email. So you got some correspondence too?
Yeah, a couple of things. I did make contact with the senator's office as well, is I don't know what the title of the person is, but his name is Jamie. I was able to provide him some documents that you've seen already. He was very interested in that transcript and wanted to know where the transcript was for the meeting last week and I think it's going to be a little while before it appears. But it did appear that he had read that as well from his comments. I did send a request for three documents to Aaronak County. The one is for the original petition that started this project off, and I think that'll be very telling. Exactly who initiated this. Reading the statute, very few people are needed to kick something like this off. And if there is a concentrated group someplace in Aaronak County that did that, it would be interesting to know. It may give us a crystal ball view of what project might be coming down the road. It could also been initiated by the Drain Commissioner of Aaronak County, so it will just be good to know, I think, what the origin was. And two other documents, because I read again in the transcript about costs of the engineer so far. And the response in the transcript was just continue the, well, there's been no cost yet. It won't be until the district is established. While engineering firms don't just go off for the good of their because they're good people and start doing engineering work on projects. Somebody has a contract someplace that initiated this, so that's for copy the contract. And another question that came up was the cost of the legal fees. And in fact, I think there was a statement at that earlier hearing about if this is something that gets challenged, then all of the legal fees associated with the challenge will also be assessed against the property owners in the district. And again, there is, was a very vocal law firm that's been participant. Again, I'm sure they're not just doing this pro bono. There's probably a contract with an hourly rate attached to it, so purpose of getting those two documents is we can get those questions answered at least. Or there may not be an invoice that's set out yet. There is probably an hourly rate that would be something that we could use then to calculate what some of those costs might be. So that was sent under Freedom of Information Act. The due date is tomorrow. Discussion with the Drain Commissioner of Aaronak County, he did refer it to his legal team and they will reply. Reading between the lines, it sounds like I'm not going to get what I asked for, but we'll see, we'll see what, where that goes. And there are appeal processes that that can be in, put in play at that point.
Why, why, why did he reach out? I'm sorry. Why did he reach out to you, Tim?
His call this morning was, I think it was this morning, maybe it was.
Yes.
Something emailed right after because I wanted to capture what was said. Yeah, it was kind of a courtesy call, I guess, to explain to me the benefits of the district and that the county would benefit from enhanced GIS data, which very true. We, we very well might, or at least will have access to that data. And there was also, you know, the thought that we might be eligible for more grants, which very well might be. Well, you know, that's nice to know. But I also explained that, you know, that while I certainly understand and I appreciate that they're following the statute, that doesn't make it something that's palatable to a lot of folks, as he knows. But it's nice of him to reach out.
Jamie was the assistant that was in there with the senator. It was just the senator and Jamie and Brad and I in that meeting. And he did seem very, very interested. He's the one that took notes and said that he would definitely follow up. The senator again seemed very interested and promised to follow up on this.
We'll be hearing some news back from them hopefully this week sometime.
He also gave us a little update, our information on the ARPA funds. Brad, I don't know. At the end of the meeting, he said, definitely with those ARPA funds, we got into a brief conversation about that and he just said, you know, obviously the well major is probably going to go dry in the next two years. So basically make sure that however you guys invest those ARPA funds. Make sure whatever it is, it's, it's going to bring you the most revenue back to the county because he does foresee financial struggles in the next two years. Correct, Brad?
That is correct. He was very, I can't repeat everything he said, but he was very strategic about what we do with those ARPA funds so that we can utilize them for what we need. Anything else, guys? All right. So on to twenty twenty two meeting schedule.
You should, the last item that's on the iPads, there should be a calendar on there maintains the same sequencing that we've used this year. Our first two meetings will be nine o'clock or second two will be five thirties. Committee of the whole preceding the regular meeting on each one. We only have two quirks next year instead of four. The one is the requirement for the annual meeting on the Tuesday following the second Monday in April. So you'll see that first meeting in April or, yeah. Second meeting in April. I will recheck that to make sure I got the right date on. I will recheck that to make sure I got the right date on that, but this is, uh, uh, an archaic rule that's from the eighteen fifties about having an annual meeting. So we'll have to make sure we label one of our meetings as such.
You got the annual meeting on the committees of the whole list.
Like I said. I'm gonna go back and fix that. Done.
Okay.
The one I was really focused on is at the end of the year, we only have one conflict next year, and that's with the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, Veterans Day is on a Friday, so that won't be an issue in our new year and Christmas holidays. Don't impact, uh, Thursday, uh, next year. So, um, there'll only be a couple of quirks like that and then, uh. Annual meeting, okay, that one. The April meeting is the, the apportionment meeting, the October meeting on the, the. Uh, thirteenth will be our annual meeting and that again is one of those archaic rules that we have to have an annual meeting, so we'll do it. But I'll double check that date, so when the resolution comes to you, you'll have the right.
Schedule in front of you.
And if it's not, we'll correct it later.
All right. Everybody like what they see there?
Yeah, no, we need to stop it. Change for claims again the first of the year. Yep, so. Again, I think I did it last year, January, February, March. I don't know, did you?
No, I didn't, but I, I did. I certainly don't have a problem.
First quarter and the fourth quarter this year.
Yeah, I did the first.
I only did, I only did one quarter this past year. I don't have a problem doing it two quarters. You want Brian and I to?
Do it in the first.
Do it the first quarter and then again the third. I'm good.
Quarter's good for me.
Okay, well, I, whatever works for you.
All right.
You know, I mean, I can, I'm out of town a lot during the summertime, so. If you wanna do it then, is that, is it okay?
Yeah.
You'll actually set this at the first January.
It sounds good. So we'll put that into motion next week, uh, for, for next year. And then, uh. Uh, lastly, uh, we have a public comment on any, anything. Doesn't have to be on the agenda. You have three minutes. Um, is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on Zoom?
Bye, guys.